We want to welcome you to our city commission study session. We ask that you turn off for silence all cell phones. Meetings are televised every day on Channel Two at 6:00 PM and at midnight and also available for viewing on YouTube. We have three items on tonight's agenda and the first item on the agenda is the Centennial Bridge presentation.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, I'm going to turn this over to Corey Imhoff from HDR and let him introduce or let everybody else introduce their team and they're here to give an update on the Centennial Bridge project. So turn it off, Corey.
Thank you. My name is Corey Imhoff. I'm a Senior Vice President of HDR, Project Manager for the Centennial Bridge Project, working for Mr. Thomas Sasso of KDOT. Thomas, you want to?
I'm Thomas Sasso, I'm the Project Manager for KDOT.
I'm Ryan Barrett. I'm the Metro Engineer representing this area for KDOT out of Bonner Springs.
And my name is Simon Sun. I'm Deputy Project Manager assisting Corey on this job.
It's really nice to be back with you guys this evening. We're coming, some of the stuff you're going to see is you've seen before, so we're just kind of making sure everybody's up to speed on that and then you'll see a few new items here as well this evening that we'll be asking for some input on and getting your guys approval on hopefully on the direction for some of the elements of the project. So we'll do, we'll start out on the agenda here, project overview. That's the stuff you're going to have seen quite a bit of already. It's kind of a lot of rehashing there. We're going to talk about a few aesthetic concepts tonight, the specific things that we're really looking for, some monumentation that we've been working with staff and developing the look and feel and location of it and getting approvals in place for it. And then there's also some refinements and some enhancements to the pier, the way the piers are going to look, which is important on a project like this as far as what the aesthetics look like. So we're going to show you guys a couple of options there and get your feedback on those so we can, we can take the rest of the project in the right direction going forward as we enter into the next phases of design and then hopefully construction in the future as well. Talk about some of the schedule updates, some of the next steps and then open it up for questions then, okay? So with that, I'm going to switch over the presentation on the screen here and we'll just walk through this. So the reasons for the project, you know, why are we doing it? Just kind of rehash that. Bridge has outlived its useful life. Two lanes of capacity across there creating some resiliency issues and just some reliability issues as far as, you know, using the bridge every day and getting into the, into the fort and into the community. There is some issues with, you know, not having bike ped facilities on the structure and being able to accommodate those and then some vulnerabilities with regard to just, you know, the way the structure operates with regard to in the, in the river and some of the things that we can enhance with a new structure and new designs. So, you know, some of the reliability issues create some logistical challenges for the fort staff getting to and from the fort every day, getting in Sherman Gate, getting into the, the main entrance to the fort. So the project you'll see as elements that are addressing that as well as the, at the intersection of Sherman Avenue and K-92. So with that, the new bridge, just want to remind everybody, no tolling. We try to remind people that every, every time we talk about it, has no tolling in it. We are doubling the number of traffic lanes from two lanes existing to four lanes. Those four lanes will go over as you'll see later in the presentation and tie into the K-92 and 45 spur around and about. So we'll show you how that works a little bit more. Resiliency from flooding, we talked about that. Type of foundations we use will be extremely resilient to flooding and scour impacts. Pedestrian bicycle accommodations will be taken over to Missouri. They will, there will be accommodations to allow that bike ped facility to transition to the shoulders on spur 45 as it, as it, in K-92 as it goes into Missouri. So that won't be precluded. They'll, the bicycles will be able to go across the shared use path and get, get to the shoulders. Future projects unrelated to this project will then hopefully one day provide some other trail connections that are being contemplated or planned in Black County side, but that'll be done by others at some point in time in the future. And then the navigational span, the arrangement on where we're setting the span will be greatly improved with the new structure as well and where we're citing the piers and how the river navigation can, can use the intended navigation span. So we're working with the Coast Guard and the Corps on that element of the project. Same image that we've shared before as far as what the overall bridge looks like, you know, there's some refinements that I want you guys to kind of think about for future part of the presentation. The way the piers look here, right now we're showing open column, round, substructure elements coming up and supporting the structure everywhere. Kind of keep that visual image in your mind as we move forward in the presentation as we reference some of the other stuff in the future here. There's a footnote at the bottom here that, that kind of talks about that we, you know, the aesthetics may change as we go through this project. There still could be some changes, but this, this image is pretty, pretty far along. It's, it's pretty photorealistic on what we intend the structure to look like.
I like the way you made our river blue. Looks pretty nice.
We're going to have a beach there.
It's, I think, I think it's, I think it's amazing what you can, I mean, pull off of stuff like this. Our architects do a pretty good job with this, so. We talked about the intersection of Sherman Avenue. We've worked really extensively with the, with the fort and staff on the way this looks and how it's set up. There's a lot of additional capacity here to have that reliability in the morning when traffic's coming in and in the afternoon when traffic's leaving at those peak surges. You know, you can note here the, the double lefts, the, you know, two, three lanes, the, everything we're doing here with this intersection will greatly improve the corridor and the way it functions. One thing to note is the right and right out of Fifth Street, there's some access control here that we've coordinated on and that needs to happen there in order for this intersection to work the right way and for that left inbound left, double left to work for the fort from a capacity perspective, so. Talk about this a little bit more later on, but it's important kind of if you look at this that we won't have any disruptions to the use of the bridge throughout construction. Traffic will be maintained from, from Missouri to Kansas, Kansas to Missouri. People will always be able to use the, the existing bridge or the new bridge and get across the river, all right? We also work really closely with the fort in the phasing of how this bridge, how this intersection gets built. In order for it to work out in the construction phase when we're building half at a time, you have a little, little bit of period where you have reduced capacity and we need to do some things to make sure that it continues to work and feed traffic into the city. So the, in talking and coordinating with the fort, we can close their use of Sherman Gate for one year and that gives us the reduction in capacity that we need to make this, this intersection work throughout construction for the other traffic that's needing to get through on K-92. A really important aspect of the traffic control for the project that we've been working really hard on to date, so. Roundabout on the Missouri side, you'll see there's from 92, when it comes by the roundabout, we're adding a lane there that bypasses the, the roundabout so that that westbound traffic does not have to get into the circulation, circulatory roadway there around the roundabout. It's a capacity issue from our projections that we needed to add to the project. That westbound lane that bypasses the roundabout plus the lane that comes out of the circulatory road of the roundabout, that's your two westbound lanes across the structure that plugs in to the, to the Sherman intersection and then likewise in reverse going eastbound across the structure, those two lanes, one goes to the circulatory road at the roundabout to go to 92, the other one would bypass to go to spur 45. That's your four lanes across the bridge. Very similar to the original planning work that was done years ago with a few minor tweaks to it. We've worked a lot on the fencing. You guys have seen a lot of these details previously. They're just further refinements. You'll see a transition here on the fencing, both on the, on both sides at north and south side of the structure, there'll be an increased arch kind of fence like what you see here with elements of their original structure with the arched element down below kind of built into that. This is done to satisfy their, the railroad security requirements for a taller fence over the top of their right away. So that, that's why this undulation in the, in the outside fence is occurring, so. A lot of input in that, a lot of, you know, work with staff on the look and feel and the colors and the way things, the way things appear and we have, have a really good direction here on, on where this needs to go at this point in time, so. Sharing that with you again, remember the look of these round columns as we move forward into some of the next steps here, okay? Another close up view kind of, you know, through the rest of the, the walkway, the way to look as the users are walking down, down the road. This is transitioning out of that taller area and you can kind of see the more normal height railing out in the distance where the arch comes down and it's, and it flattens out and follows the grade of the rest of the bridge. That's what the user will see as they're walking across it. And we have incorporated a couple of overlooks kind of in the vicinity of the, of those piers for people to be able to go out and, and get out of the way of people walking by and kind of experience a different setting out there in a viewscape looking back to the south and have a seeing view of the city and of the river, so. You've seen all of that to date. That is very similar to stuff you've seen before, I believe for the most part. This is the first piece of new information that we wanted to share with the commission and get, get some feedback on and some preferences. We developed a couple of different alternatives. One of them is, I would say develop more from the bridge engineers work on and other ones where our architects took some artistic license and did some things a little differently, so. We are wanting to get the commission's feedback on these two options and which ones you like, which ones you don't like. I don't know if there's much consent, if we can get to consensus tonight on that.
We'll be here all night.
We'd love to get your feedback on what you like and don't like about these, so.
Pretty basic. I don't, I don't really have a preference for one over the other right now.
I like option one.
I like option two.
Is there any structural difference?
Here we go.
We can, we can make it work either way.
Yeah, it'll, no matter which one you use, you're still going to be able to carry the same weight over the top of it.
Yeah, we'll be fine, yeah.
Is there any cost difference?
Cost difference, I'd say option two is going to be a little easier to form. The inset's on option one will be a little bit more expensive.
I go with option two.
Yeah, I'm good with option two.
So we got a consensus, option two.
Option two.
That's, that's the easiest decision ever.
When it comes down to money.
Well, if it's easier to form.
You just saved your money, Ryan.
Exactly, we just saved you some money.
Yeah.
Option two will be pretty, will be pretty easy for, for form, so. I would say option one typically a contractor would have to buy some, buy some special specialty forms, so there's no upfront investment and they potentially never use them again. The flat unfaceted column shapes typically, they don't have to do that, so that would be the difference.
Looks good to me.
Okay. That was a lot easier than I thought it would be.
Mostly people are going to be looking at the bridge more than the supports, I think, you know? I mean, it's you get in the distance and you wouldn't know the difference at a distance, I don't think.
Yeah, there's, there's an aesthetic difference, but only if you're down there to look at it. If you're going over the bridge, you can't see it.
Yeah, some of the reason we wanted to, you know, you have a park down there, there's going to be people walking around down there and using the park line and make sure that this community had, had a good viewscape, you know? And if you like the round columns, we can do the round columns that we had originally laid out too, so.
Do we get to select the color?
What's that?
No. What we have to be careful of is the, the color of the paint, the, what's called tag artists are going to start applying to it.
No, I think it looks good.
Yes, number two.
Okay, number two. All right. The next item is the monument. We've been working closely with Ryan and other, another staff at KDOT to get the location, size and scale of this approved and then coordinating with staff to garner their input and approval as far as what we're trying to set up here as well. And we have arrived on, at this option as being the preferred option for an entry monument on the northwest corner of the bridge between Fourth Street or Sherman and, and the west end of the bridge. There's some, as far as citing this and how it needs to be, there's some specific criteria and rules that we have to follow and we've been working through those and we have the area, area support of this element and staff support for this element, but we, we need the commission to take a look at it and then contemplate the cost of this. This is the piece, the aesthetic piece of the project that KDOT would be looking to the city to fund if you wanted to do this. We have preliminary put together, preliminarily put together an estimate. We think this is $200,000, $210,000 worth of construction cost. There'd be some design fee for that too. Typically designs, 10% of construction is a good rule of thumb. We've not put fine pencil or paper to that, but somewhere in that $20,000 additional on top of that to put together the plans for it, so total will be $230,000, design and construction.
So these are your design constraints then? These are basically your design constraints?
Yeah, so KDOT has an aesthetic allocation for capital projects and the, most of ours was the outlooks and the fencing, the little bit decorative fencing, so that visual there. I think a landmark or a sign like this is important. You know, there's many options to, to fund this. It's relatively low cost, I think, for something that'll be there a long time. The, the lighting and stuff, so the commission can certainly let me know, but we have, you know, multiple years to figure out, you know, where the, the funding would come from. The, the wall, the height, all that was all dictated by regulations about how far it had to be off the road. The wall that's in front of it had to be the height that it is. It's got to be able to protect that from, from cars and stuff, so.
This would probably be the last thing to go in, correct?
It would probably be the last thing to go in, yeah.
Okay, so we have plenty of time to think about that.
Yeah.
Yeah. I like the idea of having a sign there.
This would be on the north side of the bridge as you're traveling west.
Yeah, they're coming into the city, yes.
Approximately the, the western boundary of the Waterworks property, approximately.
Yeah. And you'll be coming downgrade, kind of seen a little bit of a curve and this will be off to the right. We try to, we try to make it to where, you know, all this stuff is, where the profile is to make sure you can see it and what you see here is what you should see, pretty darn, pretty darn close. You know, the, there's other elements to it besides the cost of it and the, you know, how we'd get it built and everything. There's also the long-term maintenance of it and Ryan, do you want, and the agreements that would need to take place.
Yeah, and so that's one thing we'd be working with staff to kind of hammer out the maintenance, kind of a maintenance agreement should you guys, you know, select to go ahead and fund this part of the project. Some of the maintenance would be, you know, the city would be responsible for the monument. Any lighting or anything on the monument, any, you know, if anything related to the monument itself would be on the city in terms of maintenance. That includes mowing around the main, you know, mowing around the monument. I know, you know, and mowing in and around, there's also a pipe that is going to also require some maintenance that the city would be responsible for.
And electricity and all that?
Yep, electricity, all that stuff.
Is this constructed out of concrete or?
Concrete, yeah, it'd be, it'd be a core concrete base and then that's a structural steel element on top, matching the color, painted the same color as the fencing, the elements of our bridge.
It shouldn't need too much maintenance then.
No, that was the goal, low, very low maintenance. The city already pays the lighting bill for the western half of the bridge, all the lights from mid-bridge back, we pay for and then the co-op on the other side pays electricity for that, so we already have electrical costs related to the bridge.
I do, I can do for the city on there.
Have there been other designs that, that we could look at or, I mean, I don't know, is this the only design that's been?
Yeah, we've looked through lots of different designs, so.
Yeah, we could do that. A lot of them didn't, weren't feasible based on the footprint that there was, the height of that support wall. We tried to build in a little bit of that kind of metal structure as an homage to the other bridge. We could certainly do that.
That's what that is.
Yeah, I like it.
Yeah, I guess.
You didn't know that, eh?
Yeah.
I did not recognize that as a piece of the, you know.
The color.
Something that's supposed to make me think of the other one.
Tried to stay pretty classical and clean and.
I like, I like.
We still got some time on the cost.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there were, one of the constraints too was the, was the Southern Star lines. There's some gas lines that run that kind of dictated, some of that dictated the location there as well, so.
Yeah, citing, citing this proved to be, it took a, that's one of the reasons that it took us so long to come back and do this presentation was just working through all of the logistics and approvals and getting, getting it ironed out, so.
And did you work with the, with the fort on this, this aspect of it? Because I know that there's some talk of, of putting an army museum, a national army museum out there, a bit west of this, but I'm not sure how much, how far west. It'd be on the, the western side of Sherman.
Yeah, we, we have not coordinated with the fort on this other than that they, they, early on in the project, we talked about the monumentation and they told us that they supported doing some monumentation of this kind, so. Actually kind of gave us the, we, we hope to see something like this is what they, what they indicated to us initially.
I like it. I do like it.
Yeah, I have to say, I think it looks nice.
Well, obviously there's, there's more follow-up needed or more information, you know, just have to let, let us know.
Looking for consensus with this design or?
Yeah, and again, since this is the one element of the bridge that the city is funding, we, you know, we have a little bit of time, but they are pretty constrained with their design. You couldn't change a whole lot, you know, placement, size, that kind of stuff because it's baked into the design of the bridge.
Yeah, I like the design.
It's very classic. I, I like it. I like it.
Can you move forward with the design?
Yes.
Can you move all the other buildings and such that'll be behind it in this view and get them out of there so it looks like this?
Yeah, get rid of all of them.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're good.
I think it looks better.
You guys?
Yes, sir. We're good, yeah, we're good with the design.
It's pretty, it's good.
This, this has taken some time and multiple iterations, so I'm glad that you guys liked it.
It's stressful, huh?
Yeah. I alluded to some of this earlier, just moving on to construction impact, I just want to, you know, kind of let you guys know some of the things that are going on. We talked about Sherman Gate. We've, we've got to get, we've got to get that intersection closed. You'll still be able to use Sherman northbound, they just, the fort just won't operate the gate to let base traffic in there for that year that we're reconstructing the intersection. We've had really good coordination with the fort and really worked that out and, and really happy we're right with that situation.
Did they, did the fort said they were going to keep the main gate open and then open the other gate that's further west?
They're, they're working out the logistics of that, but that was mentioned as a potential possibility on how they might have to operate, yeah.
Okay.
The, the next thing is the campground. If, if you guys look at what we've got to do down there, there's a lot of activity down around, down around the campground specifically, just, just to the south of the shelter that's down there on the, on the river, on the riverfront and just the construction access, the cranes that are going to be down there, the things are going to be lifted down there. We've worked with, with staff and a one to two-year impact to the use of the campground during construction is very likely. We don't have it all ironed out exactly, the nuts and bolts, how that would work, but we're contemplating closing the campground during that construction just for the safety of everybody and, and also for the, the public to know when that campground is available for use is kind of the, from a scheduling perspective, that's something that's pretty important to, to parks, parks in the city on how, how they use this campground in the future. So we're still determining that. We'll try to limit the impact as much as we can, but there's a lot of work that needs to be done down there in that area. With the railroad there, it's, it's pretty tight. We have to get girders down in there, we're going to have to get concrete down in there. We've got to demolish the, the old bridge at some point in time, though that'll all have impacts on how the park can be used.
So that would start in 2027 when the campground would have to close and?
We're going to, we're not going to, we probably won't dictate that to the contractor. We're probably going to give them a timeframe and let them kind of determine when they're going to close that with some restrictions and some.
Yeah, just so we have notice to tell our.
We would notify, we would notify them in advance, so, and we'd obviously notify the city as well in advance of those closures, so.
Is the city or parts and rec looking for a possible temporary other location for a campground?
The biggest problem is all of those pad sites have electricity and we have sewer connections down there and we have shower facilities and so we don't have anything that even remotely replicates that. We have talked about when the construction schedule starts, if we know that it won't be impacted until July, we may, you know, make that call that we'll take reservations through June 31st or something like that. We may be able to allow local reservations here and there. What we want to avoid is a lot of campers make their reservation six months or a year ahead of time because they're going across the country and they're stopping and so we would probably during this two-year period not accept advanced reservations just because we don't want to let down somebody who's coming, but we may be able to do some local and weekly reservations depending on conditions. But at some point, the amount of equipment down there would make it unsafe, so.
Yeah.
But as far as alternatives, I, I just don't think there's anything feasible that would, that we could come up with that would, that would make, that would meet what's down there now.
So we'll, we've, we're obviously going to be working on the contract to make sure that that's clear to the contract, what the expectations are. Like Ryan said, it'll be communicated out to the public.
Is there a, just a quick question? Is there a, a certain period of time, advance notice that you would be looking for from us in terms of, you know, hey, we're going to have to shut this down?
Yeah, we'll work with you on that as we move through the project. I mean, we would probably want to know by the first of the year.
Yeah.
And it would be as late as you want to go before you make that.
Okay, because we want to spell that out in the contract or at least spell it out so the contractor's aware of that, so, okay. Yeah, we'll just, we'll coordinate on that aspect. Sounds good.
So the last, the last element here, just a little bit of a new piece is the potential impacts to the riverfront drive, the access across railroad tracks into the park itself. We're studying some, some improvements there to help us get girders and equipment across the railroad tracks, make the turn by the Coast Guard property and actually get into the park there. So there's some improvements that we, we might be looking at there to facilitate construction. We're still evaluating that. You'll, you'll probably see and hear more about that as the design of the project progresses, but we have not settled on it yet because we're setting up a meeting with the Coast Guard to coordinate that further operationally there, so.
That's a mess down there. Somebody needs to do something with that.
So we will, we will see where that goes and potentially report out on that in the future as we get more refinement on that, but right now I'd say it's pretty good, pretty good odds that we're going to have to have some improvements there. So we talked about the schedule a little bit. I just wanted to let everybody know that August 29th, Simon, is our public hearing, correct? Make sure the date's right. Same place as we had our public meeting, we'll be, we'll be having the environmental assessment out by then for everybody to, to review and the point of that is, is to satisfy the formal public hearing requirements for the EA process. So we do have our field check, our formal field check is in October. Once that formal field check is complete and KDOT is satisfied with our, our plans at that point in time, then the Ryan and Thomas and staff at KDOT will begin working with everybody as far as getting city-state agreements in place to fund things like the monument and stuff like that to move, to move forward at that point in time. That's generally when that process starts. Right away, plans will go in by the end of the year as long as everything continues on, as, on schedule, which we are on schedule right now where we want to be. Right away plans in and we will begin right away negotiations and acquisition next year. And in 2026, June of 26, we'll complete the design and we'll have our bid letting in August and our contractor will be up and running in 2027 and we'll have this, this thing completed. And we'll have this, uh, this thing completed on before the, um, end of the, end of the year in 2029, so.
Corey, I think one, one thing worth noting, uh, construction funding has not yet been finalized or approved. You know, that, that decision will come probably first part of following year after field check. So that's what we know for sure when funding has been, has been granted. So just template that a little bit when we say construction is going to start pending approval of funding.
That's what that little footnote down in the bottom left corner of the slide says.
Tiny, yeah.
To give us an idea, how are you going to demolish the old one?
That'll be, uh, it'll, it'll be interesting. You'll, you'll want to be down in the park and watch that probably.
Yeah.
Typically, typically it's with, uh, a bridge like this will need to have shade charges set on them and they'll, they'll.
Cause they'll have to force it away from the new bridge, won't they?
They'll drop it straight vertical.
Straight.
Look at the one in Minneapolis.
Yeah.
Yeah, they'll drop it, um, they'll have to, they'll do some pre-demolition efforts and remove deck, they'll remove different pieces and parts and get it down to a skeleton. And then they'll very carefully drop it. You'll notice the way the bridge kind of arcs in on the west side. We've actually tried to, to site the bridge, um, to accommodate that demolition, um, the separation between the two structures for a safe, safe demolition. We've had some bridges that are probably a little too close and the shade charge, um, is, you know, the copper actually splatters the, the new girders. You don't want that to happen, so. All right.
Appreciate it, man. Great presentation.
Once it's dropped, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out a way the city can make some money. Once it's dropped, can we take it apart and sell off pieces of it to those who, you know,
Purple Wave.
Have an interest in the history of it. You know?
We'd probably leave that for those people that are interested in that and talking to the contractor that's doing the demolition.
Sure.
They, they're obviously would be.
Souvenirs?
Yeah.
Yeah, something like that. I've seen things like that done with buildings, you know, where they'll, they'll take bricks. They did that with, uh,
Sure, yeah.
Up on Fort Leavenworth, the, uh, the Catholic church that was up there.
Right.
They actually, they cleaned up bricks and sold them.
Yeah. Ryan, we'll let you work on that one.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, typically, yeah, you know, it becomes property, the, the existing becomes property of contractors, so that's where.
Oh, okay. Then it becomes a different story.
If you, I mean, if you want to contact the contractor on your own and, or on, you know, on.
Should dig it out of the river.
I'm sure they'd be able to work with you, but yeah, I mean, typically.
Well, they, they would do it for me, but they'd charge me a little more.
That's right.
Yeah, you'd have to be through the contractor, that's generally what others, so.
I'm always trying to think of more ways to get the money.
And as far as demo, like Corey said, I mean, they'll submit a demo plan to us for approval and, you know, Corey's team will review that. So, I mean, there'll be, and we'll have a pre-demolition activity meeting and all that kind of stuff, so.
And the railroad, the demolition of the railroad will be its own, uh, different type of scrutiny.
Yep.
The demolition in the river itself, um, there's very specific.
Talking about that.
There's specifically, there's very specific and stringent clearance requirements that the Coast Guard will put on it. Typically, the main navigation's, uh, span has to be cleared in 24 hours and the side spans in 48, so it's a, it's a heck of an effort.
Heck of an effort, cause the portion over the railroad tracks will have to be demolished. Probably for, that, that part will likely go first, just because we have, we'll have to line up railroad flagging and, you know, we're going, we're only, we're gonna have to work to get a window of time to be able to bring that.
And then get it cleared.
So.
Lot, that, that's.
There'll be a lot of coordination in there.
Whenever, when the main spans are shot though, I, I, I've seen a number of them shot, I'd, I would go out and watch it. It's very exciting. And then, then you have to deal with the traffic, uh, getting, getting away from it typically, so that's the not fun part of it, so. But, um, I don't know, that, is there any other questions that we can answer for you guys on where we're at?
Questions.
At this point. Good presentation, thank you. I'm so excited.
Thank you all.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Will this, uh, will this presentation be posted on the, uh,
Yeah, cause it's.
The city website?
It was on the agenda packet, so it's available on the website. Thanks very much.
Thanks very much.
Yeah, that's a good one. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Item number two, Camp Leavenworth update.
Assistant City Manager Penny Holler is gonna lead this one and have some guest speakers.
Hard to top a bridge explosion. We could do it at Camp Leavenworth.
Boom. It will be a rock in Camp Leavenworth.
The bridge comes down.
Mayor and Commission, we are about a month out from Camp Leavenworth 2023. And it's been exciting to see this event come together. Um, we brought back hopefully some of the more favorite items. And, uh, it's also been interesting to see the festival grow and kind of take on a life of its own with new items this year. Um, with me I have Jess Rogers from O'Neil Events and Marketing, as well as Christine Frechen, who's our local run coordinator with me today for this update. So everyone who's watching this, this will be the last update before we have Camp Leavenworth. So mark your calendar, September 23rd and, uh, 22nd and 23rd is Camp Leavenworth. It's Friday night and all day Saturday, starting with the 5K run. Around town, you should have seen yard signs wherever you go. So hopefully, uh, that, the word is getting out through the yard signs. Um, this year we decided to make those two-sided, so one side has, uh, Camp Leavenworth and the other side has the 5K run. We want to let folks know, um, all about what they have at Camp Leavenworth. The Facebook page is updated regularly. Um, you can see which food trucks are going to be joining us, local vendors, musical acts. Um, it's a great way to stay updated. Um, you can also go on the website and sign up for updates and those will go out to your email. It's also a great way for folks to get involved. We need volunteers, um, that can work the gate, help with camp crafty, support the silent disco. Um, if you want to come volunteer, we will find a space for you to help. So either register on the website or reach out to us. And then I will also say, uh, the convention and visitors bureau staff was, uh, has been getting out in the last few days with, um, these flyers that you should have had, um, on your, on your desk. Um, on one side again is Camp Leavenworth, the other side is the 5K run, trying to encourage those signups. And they went around to local businesses, um, who are willing to put up posters and have the flyers out. So hopefully we're doing a good job, um, getting the word out. They will also be at Pear Day, which is this Saturday on Fort Leavenworth. Um, they'll be participating in another event, the, the Flix is the Fort Leavenworth Information Sharing Event that they have. Um, also working with our partners, The Chamber and Main Street and others to get the word out. So, um, you should be hearing a lot about Camp Leavenworth in the next month, hopefully we're getting the word out. Um, I'd like to have Jess Rogers from O'Neil kind of talk a little bit about some of the larger media purchases that we've been working on.
Yeah, definitely, beyond, uh, what Penny has already spoken about, we have purchased two billboards that will run the last week of August through the festival, through September 23rd. Those are really great locations, I can send them along, but they're really great exposure on the highways and they will each have up to eight pieces of artwork that rotate. They're digital art boards, so we'll get a lot of good stuff on there, talking about the festival. Um, we are also working on some radio buys with the, um, the Bridge 90.9. A lot of the musical acts that will be performing at the festival, our regulars on this radio station are well-supported. So we're hoping to kind of pull from some of those followings outside of the local community here. And then, um, we're also doing a little bit of social media buys and ads on that to like push a little bit beyond. I will ask if you see any social media tagging the city's account, please share your stories and beyond. Just, we want to up that follow throughout the year to get people kind of invested a bit more.
What's the hashtag?
Um, we're, why, we keep tagging the city's account and everything, and so I should have that memorized at this point.
I just shared it.
Yeah, there we go, see? Thank you.
So, um, everyone here knows Camp Leavenworth, it's a free festival for the young and the young of hearts. Um, and one of the items I'm proving for you today is the newly designed toddler t-shirt. So this is one of the sneak peeks you can expect to see at Camp Leavenworth. What's also been exciting is we had 10 more local vendors sign up since the last update, so that's a total of 15 local craft vendors. We have five outside vendors, so that means it's going to be a majority of local vendors at Camp Leavenworth for the first, uh, time this year. But that's exciting for, uh, Leavenworth, Leavenworth Unique Crafts. Um, Facebook highlights a local vendor every Wednesday. And then there will also be nine food trucks and those are highlighted on Foodie Fridays on the Facebook page. Um, I think Kona Ice has signed up as well, they might have some local ties, so that's also exciting to see. And then new this year, we will have two of our local breweries. So these are downtown breweries in Leavenworth. We will still have the beer and wine sales as we've had in the event previously. Um, I think the bar was staffed by some volunteer help from Fort Leavenworth. The Leavenworth, uh, the Fort Leavenworth Spouses Club, I think is helping us with that again. These are two new beer options, so if you haven't had a chance to get downtown, we're bringing that to Fort Leavenworth, or to Camp Leavenworth, excuse me. It really was kind of a, a great alignment. We had these two new businesses and it seemed like it worked with our needs for the festival, so it's really great when we can have those items aligned. And the business bulletin board is back for the second year. This is where Leavenworth businesses can submit a five-by-seven flyer and it'll be included in the bulletin board. Uh, you can see it's camp themed, so I'm really just kind of doing some involvement of our local businesses in the community, um, in the event. The real, the goal is to have visitors come back to Leavenworth, come back and visit, shop retail, eat at a restaurant, utilize professional services. Um, so this is for physical businesses within the city of Leavenworth. They can drop that off at the CVB at City Hall. And then new this year, we have two new, um, items. Um, one will be a Camp Leavenworth themed dance performance, um, after the 5K from the First City Dance Center, formerly Dina Schreier in downtown. Um, so I think we're all excited to see that. I think Jess might have the scoop and know more about how that's developing, but, um, just another way as we start off the Saturday to bring folks down to Camp Leavenworth and then while they're there watching the dance performance of them, stay for the festivities. We also are having a 360 photo booth. So in previous years, we've done, uh, the photo bus and that's been a well-received. Uh, this year we actually had a local business reach out to us to consider doing a 360 photo booth. Um, this really is for those that, um, have social media. So in essence, it's photos, but it's a 360 in the round. So it ends up to be a video that you can share on your, any kind of social media, your TikTok, your Instagram, your Facebook, your help me out. Jess knows all, all the things.
X.
Yeah.
So we, we talked about, I think one of the questions that came up was, uh, you know, what can teenagers, um, do at the event? They'll know all the, they'll know all the things that, or they can post this and show with their friends.
They can show old people how to post on social.
Exactly. And then the music lineup launched in July. I think we talked about this, the goal is to really have kind of broad appeal, various audiences. We'll have two local acts, the Darren Denny Band and the Penny Black Band. Um, we'll also have another contestant, uh, from The Voice, so this is Cassie Joy. She was on Team Blake, um, so it certainly has a pretty good following there. Um, and then also includes the fireworks Friday night. That'll be at dusk roughly 8:00, 8:30. So that will be some of the, uh, entertainment that we'll have available there. And then the next morning, we will start the 5K run on Saturday and I'll let, uh, Christine kind of fill us in on that update.
The 5K is back. Uh, I listened to feedback from people from last year, I mean, it was overwhelmingly positive, but, um, we will have a, a packet pickup that's available on Friday that will cut down on some of the congestion at, at packet pickup on Saturday morning. It'll also get more people into Camp Leavenworth on Friday. Yes, we have a new t-shirt design that's, uh, a little less bunny-heavy, a little less girly. That was one of the comments from last year is that the t-shirt was a little too feminine. So we have, uh, we have another design that I personally really like a lot that, uh, that also has the year on it. So the idea is that people could do it every year and eventually they'll have a whole collection of shirts with the year, which is pretty aggressive year on it. Um, we have about 70 signups so far. Uh, I've watched, been watching the web traffic, like every year, like the traffic goes, or every day the traffic goes up and up, so everyone's lurking. This is exactly what they did last year, like the page views went up and up and up, but nobody signed up until they knew what the weather forecast was going to be. So, um, as with last year, I expect most people are going to sign up probably in the two to three week period, right before the festival, when they kind of get a sense of the weather. The course is different this year. Instead of, as you, as you recall, maybe from last year, we had to go with the, the two-loop course that did the whole, uh, North Esplanade twice. That was because of the construction that was on second. That is all completed as you know, so we'll go back to the original concept for the course, which was on southern loop that takes you, uh, takes you south past the Justice Center, up around South Esplanade and then back downtown, you go right past finish, start-finish line again, and then you do the northern loop once. Um, the other great thing, we had a lot of people last year that only did one loop. That will, again, that'll be an option again this year, they can just do half of it if they want. They still get the shirt, they still get the beer ticket, they still get the sunflower at the end. Uh, the sunflowers this year are being grown right here in Leavenworth, um, which is quite, uh, quite exciting. I go visit them regularly and see how they're coming along. Uh, and that's by our local florist here, so really excited about the, the local sunflowers too. And, um, but otherwise, all of the great stuff from last year will be back, the music, people announcing your name as you cross the finish line. Um, the awards for, for second and third place overall for men and women are being made by my cousin, Charlie Phillips. He's a woodburner, so he's making, uh, custom trophies for those again, which is super cool. Uh, and we have a prize purse again this year, the hundred dollars first place, uh, fifty dollars second with twenty-five for third. So, um, super, super excited and, uh, can't wait to do it again this year, so. Uh, oh, there, there's also going to be a stroller division. We're gonna do a, a special award for the stroller, stroller, stroller participants. Last year there were quite a few and some of them were very fast.
Oh, the stroller moms.
I was about to say, I didn't take that.
Yeah, so, um, so we'll have a, we'll have a special stroller award this year, so it'll be great.
Cool, well, maybe John can give us a good, uh, forecast now. Sign us. No, that's cool. Thank you.
I think we still haven't heard, um, if our request for a military flyover to start the 5K has been approved.
It's been approved.
Really?
Yes. As of 2:30 today.
Okay.
Before our last word.
Oh, that's missing.
So now we're just waiting on, um, to hear who will be flying. That's the last box that needs to be checked.
Are we, are we good to disseminate that information?
Oh. I think we just did.
And it's, uh, the Air National Guard, is that? Give me a photo.
I have to look at, yes.
Give me a photo.
I think the request may have been out of Missouri.
Yes.
Okay, great.
I believe.
That's so, that's so wild. That was, I was, that was something I just threw out at a random early meeting, like, let's get a flyover!
Yeah, that's always great.
Kudos to you, Penny, you just made it happen.
That's cool.
That's awesome.
It'll be right before the race starts.
Yeah, that's so cool.
Corey, I'm trying to think when the most people would be gathered to make the biggest effect, and I think that'll be a good time.
So, quick question, just for clarification, animals, pets, dogs? I know there was a lot of. Okay, not allowed, alright, alright.
Service animals are always allowed.
Yep, okay. Yep, and for the volunteers at the gate, will they be checking bags or will they not be checking bags? Cause I know there was a lot of confusion last year regarding that as well too.
I think we post the rules and they're pretty clear when folks walk in. Ideally, we're reminding people what those rules are, they're pretty practical. I don't know if we did any, um, checking last year.
About to say, just want to make sure that everyone knows.
Yeah, I mean, the rules are really there for safety, citizen safety and just kind of practicality and then also wanting to support the vendors. But if there are questions, I mean, we, we work with the volunteers. Um, you can always, you know, call one of the event folks that are onsite. That's why staff also have the obvious t-shirts that you'll see, so I'd always say when there's a question, just ask a volunteer and we can help someone through that.
And just in general for festivals, we typically have professionals do any bag checking. We would not put that responsibility on a volunteer or civilian. So that would be something that if you think on it further and you would like to hire security to do bag checking, we can put that in place.
I think we're good, I don't think we need it, yeah, we got, yeah.
We have pretty good security, okay.
Yeah, but I appreciate, those were the only questions I had, anybody else?
I had a couple other updates, if that's okay.
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
So, some of the activities, I think we, uh, mentioned earlier, Leavenworth Arts, they presented to the city commission last week on their event. Um, they will be helping us out at Camp Leavenworth as well, um, with the chalk art portion. They'll be doing that again this year. And then we've confirmed the climbing wall from the Kansas National Guard, that's exciting. It sounds like that was an element that we had a few years ago and folks really enjoyed it.
That's a beast, I tried to last week.
And then the, um, US Army recruiting, um, is also doing some football toss, cornhole ID making. So these are all, um, you know, really kind of community, uh, groups that are getting involved and they add elements to Camp Leavenworth that are fun and exciting and usually don't cost us anything, which is also wonderful.
That's good.
Sounds great.
So, um, you know, kind of just in, in closing, um, you know, everyone knows Camp Leavenworth is the city's. So, um, you know, kind of just in, in closing, um, you know, everyone knows Camp Leavenworth is the city's festival. This is our chance to showcase the city, um, for this event. It's funded with transient guest tax dollars from overnight hotel stays. It's made possible by the commission approving the funding for this event every year. It's the fourth year of this event. Each year we learn and get ideas. Hey, how about a flyover? Hey, what about a business bulletin board? It's been really great to see the festival kind of gain a life of its own and grow. And it's starting to really be, I think, a part of the community. These things don't happen without a lot of help and support. So, um, city staff does get involved in this. I'd say almost all the departments have a piece of this. Uh, the police department does road closures. The city clerk gets the license, permits. And, um, the CVB staff is out letting folks know this is happening. It's really a group effort. We really appreciate our partnership with O'Neal Events and Management. So Jess and I think everyone's met Kelly before. So they will be onsite every minute of every hour of Camp Leavenworth and all the setup. So, um, we appreciate all of their hard work. Our five K event coordinator, Christine, who's doing this on a volunteer basis, uh, came to us last year and said, hey, I have an idea. So it's really great to see these things just kind of grow and, and develop. Um, and then it also couldn't happen without the groups that, that participate and volunteers. If I haven't mentioned or folks haven't heard, we could use some volunteers to sign up and help us. That's the only way to get the free staff T-shirt. And, uh, you can go ahead and register on the website.
And actually because of the non repetitive two loop course, the longer course, we actually need more volunteers for the run than we did last year. So. Still get a T-shirt, still get the sunflower. And it's only a two hour commitment.
And a beer ticket.
And a beer ticket. Sure.
Might sell it for people.
So with that, we're happy to answer any questions you have.
Yeah, the cheerleaders, cheerleaders coming back too.
Was that the, um, the high school cheerleaders are going to help us?
High school cheerleaders, yeah.
Good.
Cut off for, uh, race registration?
Uh, we'll be taking, we'll be doing onsite registrations on Friday.
Cool deal.
Hoping to avoid race day registrations. That was kind of a melee last year. But, uh, Friday that will be onsite for people that don't have internet, internet service or don't want to, don't want to do that online. They can sign up on Friday at Camp Leavenworth.
That's good. Any other questions, comments?
No.
Thank you.
Nope.
Thank you.
I'm so excited.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking of something, but it'd be something that's too late now for next year.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, well, appreciate it.
Spit it out.
No, no, for next year, if you haven't already done it. And I don't know if you've maybe already done it. So.
Yeah, we'll take ideas. I mean, that's, it's been exciting to hear what develops and what people think of that we've been able to incorporate.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Last item on the agenda, solid waste operations update.
Yeah, Mr. Commissioner, I'm going to turn this over in a minute to our public works director. We're not looking for consensus tonight. We're not looking for changes. We're not suggesting any changes. We just want to have a, a conversation kind of where we are. What we've seen so far, some of the, uh, stuff that's gone well, some of the adjustments we've made, um, just to kind of communicate with the public and with the elected officials. So I'm going to turn it over to Brian.
My presentation isn't as exciting as the last two, but I do have some trashy photographs for you.
Some of those are kind of exciting.
As everyone knows, last summer, which has been challenging for our staff, uh, from implementing the polycard system to staff shortages to delays or inability to dump at the transfer station, uh, due to shortage of private trucks to haul from there. Uh, we've been running typically about a day behind. Uh, this will improve as staffing levels increase and as staff gets more familiar with the equipment. Uh, the city did begin enforcing new regulations regarding trash collection on, uh, July thirty first. These changes occurred after the delivery of the polycarts, uh, to our residents. As per recommendations from the solid waste citizens task force and approved by the city commission, uh, the major changes were uh, the citizens did receive a polycard, either sixty-five or ninety-five gallon, uh, for the use. They also had the option to opt out and continue to use bags. Uh, the city would no longer provide trash bags. Residents could use the polycard and/or bags at their choice. Uh, the city would no longer pick up loose items, for example, uh, boxes, those types of things. And large item pickups would continue to occur on Friday, but only two items per residents per month. Uh, so those are the major changes that we implemented. Uh, we've seen a number of positives from this effort. Uh, the first positive is that the collection staff likes the tippers. Uh, we weren't sure. They hadn't used them before. They weren't familiar with them. We didn't know how that would go.
Wonder about that.
Uh, it was an unknown for staff, but they do like them. Uh, we are also seeing less debris and torn bags due to animal damage. And overall, the implementation of the polycards and the new requirements has resulted in a less cluttered appearance in many of our neighborhoods. Uh, we have also received, which we thought we might, a number of requests for polycards from residents that initially opted out. Uh, they saw the neighbors get them. Uh, they decided they'd like them. We had a hundred extra polycards. The ninety-five gallons at the start of this, uh, were down to probably less than thirty. Uh, and we have a list of about fifty people who want them. And so we have actually ordered another hundred.
Okay.
So that, that's going well. Uh, crews are also facing some challenges. While we are doing everything we can to make sure everyone knows the rules and that residents have options such as free first Saturday, our recycling center and brush site, um, some properties haven't got the message. Uh, some truly appear unaware of the changes and others appear to be working the system. Uh, it's the if we could, we'll continue to pick up all their, uh, trash. Staff is working through these challenges, um, but change can be difficult. Uh, some of what we are noticing, uh, we ordered one tipper per truck and because we're continuing to take bags. And so we thought one tipper would be sufficient. Um, what we noticed with the number of polycards that are out there, we can only dump on one side. And so we're having to run the compactor more frequently. It slows us down. Uh, so we've actually ordered a second tipper per truck.
Good.
Our first truck with two tippers actually arrived yesterday. And so we started using that today. Uh, so that will speed things up. Uh, unfortunately, we have a low level of staffing at the exact same time we started the polycard system. As mentioned, some properties are placing loose items on top of polycarts and bags. With the assumption that we'll throw away the loose items before we get to the bags and the polycard. We're working through that. Um, there continues to be, as people learn, large volumes of cardboard, those types of things in the piles. One thing we have noticed is a number of carts that are placed at the street and they leave them there.
Yeah.
Instead of pulling them back to the house at the end of the day, they leave them at the street. They actually carry their trash down and put it in the cart. So that's something that we'll need to deal with also. Um, and one thing that we have received, we received a number of requests for a second polycard. People like what they have, how they like how it looks. And so they said, hey, can we get a second one? And our response has been, we'll, we'll determine that later. We're just trying to figure out one. And so.
Sure.
Just some pictures. This is, uh, within the last week. Uh, these are, you know, they've got the polycard, they've got the bags, uh, they got loose items. Let me go back. Again, you know, people are using the polycards, um, but they continue, uh, some people continue as they're getting the message. We do post these with a sticker that lets them know what the violation is. Uh, when they call in, um, some of the calls can be pretty interesting. Um, we do remind them of free first Saturday. We encourage that. Uh, even with staffing shortages this past month, we had, we still continue to have free first Saturdays because we're telling people, bring your stuff then. We actually have been using our street department crews to haul, uh, trash trucks to the dump as well as some of the containers we have. So we have the availability for recycling and for the free first Saturdays. One of the things we are seeing at the bottom, you know, our service is really set up for residential trash service. You know, we've, we've been trying to get away from the whole house dumps and picking that up. But the bottom picture shows this was taken, uh, today. And, uh, we do continue to see a lot of that. That's more than residential pickup. There's one house that put out about thirty bags. Um, and so we, we pick that up. Because we currently have, there's no limits on trash and it's all bagged and it's under the weight. But that's one of the things we do see a lot. So. But we're working through it. So I think things are improving and they will continue to improve. So.
Do you see in the future possibly putting a limit on the number of bags?
We have a list along with a second bin, a potential limit on bags. We talked about a limit on bags just in conversation. But having that not apply to October first through November thirty first, because of leaves.
Right.
But then it's every time you do that, then it's, you know, you gotta remember, you know, that kind of stuff for Christmas. So, um, we have that on the back burner, maybe for a study session in the fall to, to discuss that. We'll, we'll collect, continue to collect data and pictures and stuff like that. But certainly don't want to change anything right now.
I think it's going to get better. I mean, again, it's, uh, this has been going on for two weeks.
It's already been getting better.
Yeah. And I mean, especially if we go out with a second polycard. Um, when we did the survey, ninety-four percent of the residents that responded said they have six bags or less. And so, I mean, again, this is somewhat isolated.
So for that mattress, did they call in to the service center and schedule the time to have that picked up or?
Not initially.
Okay. Okay.
But, but those, again, we would always pick that up before.
Yeah, yeah.
And so that's, we'll put a sticker on, we'll remind people of that. And that'd be something on a Friday that we would pick up.
I don't like breaking boxes down, but I, I like the end result. So, you know, it just, it works fine.
One of the rules we talked about with sharp items like, uh, one of your pictures showed, looked like broken glass. We said, put that in a cardboard box and mark that it's sharp and put it alongside.
Uh, you can do that or you can put it inside in a box, put it inside the polycard.
That's sure. That'd be safe.
Safer, yeah.
But yeah, it, it would be safer if it's inside. But if we do have people put it out there and it's marked sharp, you know, with a big magic marker or something, you know, they're going to pick that box up.
Yes.
But not the other boxes, right?
One box.
Yeah.
The, the, the challenge with that is, you know, we've had a lot of rain lately. And so people put out a cardboard box with sharps in it and it gets wet. And we try to pick it up. They tend to fall apart. So we do encourage people to put them in the polycard.
We only use one or two bags every week, but it's nice to have it in there and not have the animals go after it, you know? Put it in the night before. Cause before we always put it out that morning because we're right on the edge of the woods. So we always, we, we couldn't do that. But now we can put it out the night before. And I think people are seeing that too, that their neighbors are able to put it out. But people keep asking me, are you changing my date? No, no, no. We're just, how is the staffing now?
We actually, uh, had a new person start about two weeks ago. Uh, I believe we have one starting this Thursday.
Good.
We're actually starting to get applications in.
Good.
I, I think a, a big help of that was the, the increase that the employees received in July. We're having a lot of friends of, of employees apply. And then when we, when we talk to people, we actually show them, uh, what was proposed in the twenty-four budget is the bump that they'd be receiving. And that also has been very helpful.
Good. That's good to hear.
That's effective January. So you can show them and by the time you get on three months, you know, you could see twelve, fifteen percent increase. So.
That's real good. Yeah.
Good for people to know.
I mean, with the, with the slow increase in staffing and getting that second tipper and people understanding the rules, I mean, it's, it, it will get better.
Well, the work itself won't be as hard.
Correct.
Because they won't have to be picking up those heavy furniture and stuff. Good, good job.
Yeah, that's good. Has the storm set us back quite a bit? The storms we've been having lately?
They don't help. Um, but that's one thing the street department has been spending a lot of time working on those.
Are you expecting it to get better also because moving in time period for the new class up at CGSC? Getting closer to an end. You know, that, I mean, when we started this, it was right in the heart of the, the thousands of, a thousand families moving into the area.
And then once, once that gets better, then again, the leaf season hits. Yeah. It's our worst two, two weeks for leaves are the first two weeks of November. Those are the, the two weeks we get hammered hardest. Again, we're telling people the brush sites, we're encouraging people to use that. Um, it's a, it a lot of it's education. So we're working on it.
Yep.
Good. Thanks. Good report.
The, I noticed it myself. Top of the polycard, when it flips over, and I'm sure other folks have seen it. There's a little thing on there with a couple of arrows and it says, point this towards the street.
Yeah, my husband did that.
I've had the guys tell me.
Told him it was backwards.
Put the handle towards the street so we can grab it and move it.
We actually tried to get that changed, um, but it's the mold that they use in the fabrication.
Yeah, there isn't much you can do about it.
But for a truck, it's if we have the loaders, we can't do the side loaders on the trucks because of all the parking on the street. But if you were to do that automated loader, you would want it the way the arrows say on the top of it.
Yeah.
Uh, but when we go grab it, it's quicker for us just to reach up and grab the handles versus walking around. It's just, our preference is to have the handle towards the street.
Yeah. And it, that just goes back to the education process.
And then we also, with all the rains, we put it down. Sometimes we leave the lid open. So when people get home, there's about fifty pounds of water in the bottom of the car.
That's all right.
Yeah, well, definitely appreciate the update. Any more comments?
Yeah, thank you. No, good. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
We'll be back in probably sixty days and give you another, another update of where we are, um, unrefused.
All right. Well, that concludes our agenda. At this time, we'll go around the table to see if there's any updates. Start with the city manager.
Uh, just a quick note, we got, we're starting to get a few questions on campaign signs. Um, so, uh, planning community development, sending the notice out to the candidates. Political signs are allowed on private property as long as they meet the sign regulations. That does not apply to the forty-five days. So you could have them out now if they meet the sign regulations. And that's dictated by whether you're residential or commercial. And then it's forty-five days from the, from election day. I don't have that date exactly.
September, around mid-September.
Yeah, that, uh, that they'd be allowed in the right of way. So right of way signs are still not allowed right now. So if you see, uh, a cell phone line or something like that, that's not allowed. It's forty-five days. But political signs, as long as they meet the size, uh, regulations, and that deals with the state statute on content neutrality. Is if we allow somebody to have a Leavenworth High School basketball player lives here sign or something like that, you have to have a, a neutral toward content. So those are allowed if you see those out.
Great.
Okay. Thank you.
A lot of people have questions after.
Sure.
Yeah. Commissioner Hengler?
I can, you know, as I always seem to want to do, I'd invite everybody to come on down here to the, to these study sessions and to all of our city commission meetings. Uh, the more people are involved, the more they're going to like it and know what's, what's happening here and why things are happening the way they are. So come on down to the, to the city commission meeting and, uh, on Wednesday mornings, go down to the county commission meetings. Right, Commissioner? We'd like to see more involvement of the citizens.
She's not mic'd up over there.
Yeah. Thank you. Commissioner Martin?
Uh, just a quick question. Paul, do you know, cause I, I just saw my tax, you know, public tax statement and stuff last week. And so with everything, the way everything came in, I know we won't know where we sat budget wise on your, you know, total mill, you know, set with revenue neutral, everything like that. Um, do we know exactly what it was that kind of pushed us over the, at that rate? Yeah, yeah.
Specifically the city mill? Because if you're looking at your total bill, you know, you'll be, the school district and the county would be on there. For the city of Leavenworth, we, we cut two point six eight eight mills.
Sorry, right, right.
Which was for city supported funds. The library had a small cut, but their cut did not meet the statutory definition of revenue neutral. So since the city levy is on behalf of the library, the city was technically, the city's levy was technically not, um, revenue neutral, but the city supported mills was. And again, we have no control over the library's levy. We just levy it on their behalf.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay, okay. Now I just had a question because I was just thinking, when do we, um, when do we finalize everything again?
Next week.
It is next week.
Yeah. Next week is when we have the public hearings.
Okay. I couldn't remember what, if we were doing something in September, just trying to, I think so. Okay.
We have the public hearings. Do we also vote that week, that week too?
For adoption of the budget. Yeah.
Okay. I won't be here and I won't be available to, to be here at all. Anyway, I have some comments. So since I won't.
Oh, are you through? I'm sorry.
No, I'm good. I'm good. Yeah, that's all I got.
I don't want to talk over.
No, you're good.
Since I'm, I'm not going to be here, I can't. Since I'm not going to be here, I kind of just put some thoughts together before the meeting next week. I just got my home appraisal, it looks like the assessed valuation is another thirty thousand higher than last year, which, this is based on the base, the state formula, which is approximately eleven-point-five increase. With increases over the last five years of valuation, and my house has doubled, and I'm sure others, I've gone through the same thing, because, I mean, my house is a pretty standard house, it's nothing fancy, and it's definitely not worth twice what it was five years ago. Leavenworth property taxes, the property taxes themselves are used for most critical services, the police, the fire, public works, city administration, and our library goes through that, sewers and streets. Property taxes make up nineteen percent of our budget, but our sales taxes, which we are very fortunate to have a lot of sales tax here, and to do economic development to make it even, to where we even are able to help that out, to save more money on our property taxes. Our sales taxes make up forty-eight percent. And the sales taxes are used for, people ask me, when are my property taxes paying for the park upgrades and that? Sales taxes are used for projects, parks, recreation upgrades, economic development projects, like the Willcut Building, like other, you know, blighted properties that we might be able to turn around and generate sales tax with. And so, that's a self-generating thing. And so, that's why generating sales tax is so important for us, and why we're focused on economic development, that generates that. Is that correct, Paul? I just want to make sure.
Yeah, everything you said so far has been.
Is correct. The rest of our budget's made up of grants and intergovernmental funds, franchise fees, we have over six-hundred thousand dollars that we get through hotel tax.
Yeah, transit.
Transit guest tax, that we didn't have, we didn't have any five years ago, and we get about six-hundred thousand dollars a year just from that. And those funds pay for things that draw more people into Leavenworth, which also helps our sales tax, and also helps our, which also eventually helps our property tax. So, that fund is used for Camp Leavenworth, it's used for other things in our community, some of our grants that go to our museums, and things that make our roadways look inviting, signage and that sort of thing. So, that fund is really helpful for our community that we didn't use to have, so we're fortunate to have that. So, I mean, these are just some information for people to realize, and I know you talked about it at our budget hearings and that, but everybody can't hear that, you know, and it doesn't, I think it's good to repeat, to repeat, that this is, we are, we are using our property taxes to take, to pay two of our biggest budget items, which is police and fire. You know, those are two of our biggest, our big budget items that we have to support, we have to support our police salaries, we have to support fire. And I think during our budget hearings and during our discussions, we've done a great job of addressing those issues. And I hope you all agree with me on that.
Yeah.
Anyway, there's, I mean, there's just some, I'm just so frustrated because my assessed valuation has gone up, and there has to be something that stops that. I mean, it's, it is, people who own rental property, theirs go up too, and they end up charging more for rent, and our rents are already high, so young people can't afford to rent. And there's another fund that you're going to hear more about in the future, and I'm working on an article about it, and it's ad valorem, it's called ad valorem taxes, and people don't know what that is, it's a tax that we pay to the state. Basically, Kansas is required to send a share of its tax collection, cities and counties each year to a fund, supposedly to help us when our sales, when our property taxes go up. I don't understand the concept of paying the state something that they are holding for us, and then them never sending it back to us. Why are we paying them at all? And this is something that we need to look at on the state level. Lawmakers have continuously, and this is over, this is nonpartisan, this is over the years, lawmakers have continuously waived the rule to return those funds. And, you know, I suppose it's helped shore up state budgets, I know it helped shore up Brownback's income tax cuts during those years, and other years we've had downturns in the economy. But Kansas now sits on more than one billion dollar surplus, but reinstating that program according to what some of our legislators faces long odds. So, that's just some things to think about, I know our county is advocating strongly on support of returning those, but I think if they don't return them, we shouldn't be paying them at all, that's what I think, but.
And we've had many different governors, and it's.
I know, it's not partisan, it's not partisan, it just needs to be done, something needs to be done with that. And so, that's my two cents for them. Didn't get a chance to say this next week, so good luck with the budget hearing, budget hearings and stuff. Thank you all for working so hard for our city.
Yeah, thank you all for your updates, and I just wanted to say, I've made my rounds to a couple of the schools today. It turned out to be a great, successful first day of school with the teachers as well as the students, and I just want to continue to pray for everyone, and pray that everyone remains safe this upcoming week as well. God bless you, and that concludes our meeting, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.